Turn that down a notch or two, probably.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 18th, 2024 conference meeting of the Mobile County Commission and call the meeting to order. I see Sharia is missing. So, Kelsey, did we have any speakers?
We have one person sign up to speak, Jason Smith, Mason Hill Farms, right-of-way vacation.
Thank you.
Is that the Alabama Power Vacation? Which one is it?
Do you know what item number that is? Yeah, can we turn, can we turn this down a little bit? It's reverbing up here pretty loud. Kim, do you know what vaca- what vacation they're referring to? On the engineering, on the admin? Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, if that's it, then Mr. Kerr is not here either, so we'll just call on Dana.
Okay. Good morning. Consider taking the following action on agenda items. Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 22nd, 2024. Number two, approve the list of claims. Number three, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balances report. Item four, approve customer service contract agreement with Logical Computer Solutions, Inc. for monitoring and managing a disaster recovery backup system for Catalyst Software application in the amount of $1,000 per month for three years. Item number five, appropriation contract with United Methodist Inner City Mission in the amount of $10,000 from District One Education Funds for its after-school tutorial and summer enrichment program at Taylor Park Community Center. Item six, amending professional services contract with Michael Campbell Archivist to increase the contract amount from $17,500 to $22,500 for additional funds in the amount of $5,000 from District One Education Funds to preserve and catalog historical information and images related to the sites on the Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage Trail. Item seven, approve sponsorship agreement with University of South Alabama Jagals in an amount of $550 from District Two Education Funds for its sports social event. Item eight, approve appointment of Kimberly Newberry Sanderson as county engineer effective July 22nd, 2024, requested by the county attorney. Number nine, approve appointment of Ozzie Lortegi as the Americans with Disability Act Coordinator. Item two.
Is Ozzy's first name spelled right?
Yeah, ma'am.
Okay.
We will correct it.
Okay, thanks.
I thought maybe that was, Ozzy was your nickname.
Ozzy is my nickname. Well, Seattle is my first name.
Oh, okay.
It's a Z.
Okay.
O S.
O X.
O S I E L.
So you should be Oxy instead of Ozzy.
Oxy. He doesn't know what to say. He's speechless.
That's unusual for Ozzy to be speechless.
We can call you whatever we want? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Item ten, approve amending the 2024 Capital Improvement Plan to create Project CIP 2024-004, equipment upgrades to Metro Jail Sewer System in the amount of $3,393,819.35. This amendment creates a new project, CIP 2024-004, equipment upgrades to Metro Jail Sewer System, and allocates $3.3,393,819.35 from the 2024 Capital Improvement Plan budget. Item eleven, award bid to Construction Labor Services, Inc. for ARP-05, equipment upgrades to Metro Jail Sewer System for their total bid in the amount of $4,197,500 to be paid as follows: From American Rescue Plan, $803,680.65 And from CIP 2024, $3.3,93,819.35. Item twelve, approve change order number one with LLC H, Inc. for the, for it, fly remediation measures at Mobile Government Plaza. The change order will decrease the contract by $5,000 and the new contract will be in the total amount of $185,143.44. Item thirteen, change order number one with Bill Smith Electric, Inc. for the installation of emergency generator at Afric Town Heritage House. The change order will decrease the contract by $5,000 and the new contract will be in the total amount of $189,100. Item fourteen, authorize advertising for bids, service contract elevator maintenance, and service at various county facilities. Item fifteen, approve subrecipient agreement between the Mobile County Commission and the Town of Dauphin Island to supply West End Beach ambassadors to engage with and educate visitors as to how to interact with the local wildlife in ways that do not harm nesting activities and the threatened or endangered species on the island at a cost of $136,500 to be paid by the funds, by funds from the National Resource Damage Assessment, pending legal review. Item sixteen, contract between the Mobile County Commission and FTI Consulting to provide actuarial services, analyzing historical data to determine appropriate rates for general liability workers' compensation and automobile insurance coverage to be paid by Cost Center 045. Item seventeen, approve professional services contract between Mobile County Commission and Rec Desk LLC to provide reservations and other customer support to patrons of the Mobile County Park System at a cost of $2,950 annually to be paid from Cost Center 091. Item number eighteen, approve subrecipient agreement between Mobile County Commission and the Child Advocacy Center for counseling services for child abuse victims and their affected families in the amount of $25,000 to be reimbursed to the county from community development block grant funds requested by the Grants Department. Item nineteen, approve a no-cost grant amendment to extend the period of performance to January 31st, 2025 for Mount Vernon Water Treatment Plant upgrades requested by the Environmental Services Department. Item twenty, adopt the resolution assenting to the vacation by Mason Hills LLC of a portion of right-of-way at Wheatcroft Road Extension East as shown on map prepared by Poly Surveying dated June 22nd, 2023.
Sir, I do have a question. If you could, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Smith. Is this a, this is a power line eas- what, is this for Alabama Power? What, what are?
No, this is an unopened county.
Yeah, I didn't have any documentation. Kim, are you familiar with, are you familiar? Matthew, are you familiar with the, with the vacation? I don't have any documentation on it. That's why I was asking.
Good morning, commissioners. When Mason Hill Farms opened their processing facility up there, there was a right-of-way from a flat about 100 years old that was adjoining adjacent to their property. And so they were faking that to make use of that property for a part of their pension plan. There's no facilities anything we're aware of. There's no facilities anything we're aware of.
So it's like when you make that left and go to the end, it's down on the end on the right, I think?
Make the left, go to the end, and I think the, it runs right to left.
Like it, yeah. So like you're talking about where that old Wheatcroft right-of-way used to be, or is that what we're talking about?
Yes, it does, I don't know.
Okay.
It, it, I'll have to pull up the map.
No, no, it's fine. I don't have an issue with it, Mr. Smith. I just wanted to make certain what we would do. I've looked at, I think I went out with, and with Joey and looked at it before, so, okay.
So we have no objection to, to do that?
Yeah, that was my next question. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for being here.
Okay, item 21, to be voted at the conference, approve granting distribution facilities easement to Alabama Power for electrical service at Chickasaw Park.
Second.
Item 22, approve renewal of contract with TDA Consulting for a term commencing August 1st, 2024 and ending July 31st, 2025 for professional, technical, and expert services for the home program. Item 23, approve professional services contract with Jubilee HR Consultants LLC in the amount of up to $48,000 for a term of five months to provide additional human resources consulting services in accordance with Statement of Work Number Two, pending final legal review. Item 24, award bid to Bill Smith Electric for practice field lighting for Tanner Williams Community Park for their total bid in the amount of $109,300. Item 25, appro- Oh, okay. Cost Center CC02 Fund 001. Item 25, approve appropriation contract with Junior Achievement of Mobile in the amount of $1,000 from District Two Education Funds for its Inspiring Tomorrow's Program. Item 26, approve right-of-entry permit for Tenaska Sequestrian Services LLC hook for access to certain Mobile County Commission property, commonly known as the Lauren Dean Tract, for a period not to exceed 180 calendar days, subject to final legal review.
Why does, why does Tenaska need a right-of-entry?
Speak to that.
Okay.
Steve Burley, I'm speaking on behalf of Tenaska Air. One, one thing, the mayor lives in, wires cross, these, these access is not the Lauren Dean Tract. It's a parcel in North Mobile County that's connected to a long-range project, which is the carbon capture and sequestration project. It was announced a few months back. The right-of-entry is for seismic testing, which is, I'm not a geologist, so I'll try to get around this term, it's urgent, but essentially they will.
Oh, thanks. Essentially, they will drive a seismic testing truck over the project property, and it maps out the geological formations going down several miles. And this is tied into just ensuring that all of the safety and storage is exactly as they expect it to be. They need access through county property to map some of that with those trucks.
So you're looking at the North Mobile site and a site in the south part of county?
That's potential later on, but the real pressing issue and what, what is, you know, time-sensitive is the North Mobile site.
Now, this is, this says the Lauren Dean Tract.
That's right, I'm, I'm.
That's a mistake.
I'm not sure why it says that. That's not the, the issue that's.
I think we need to make that correction by Monday, please.
Yeah.
We can, yeah, we can fix that.
I know Jay and Christina have, were involved in preparation of the agreement.
And we can get that squared away, but this is the North Mobile County site.
The reason I asked is because I was familiar with North Mobile. I wasn't as familiar with, with you, with something in South Mobile County.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item 27, award bid to P.L. Russell LLC for Afric Town Heritage House Drainage Improvements for their bid in the amount of $99,314.60 to be paid from Cost Center 084. That's, that's Fund 116. It should be Fund 116 on there. Okay.
What?
Twenty-seven, yes.
Twenty-seven should be Fund 116?
Believe so. Eric?
Yes.
Okay. Twenty-eight, approve assignment of Duplantis Design Group, PC, for soccer complex phase two A concession stand and restroom in the amount of $138,500 for design, bidding, and project administration. Item 29, authorize amendment to the subrecipient agreement with Family Counseling Center of Mobile doing business as Lifeline Counseling Services regarding community development block grant funds to provide homeowner counseling to eligible participants with the urban, within the urban county to extend the term of the agreement until July 31st, 2025. Item 30, approve professional services contract with JJPR Agency LLC for community engagement and outreach for the Town of Dauphin Island's West End Bird Conservation and Management Plan to be paid from MCRP3DIWE. Number 31, approve request of the City of Pritchett, District One Councilmember Annie Williams to use the Eight Mile Shopping Center parking lot at no charge for her annual back-to-school giveaway event on Saturday, August 24th, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Item 32, approve agreement between the Mobile County Commission and Tenex Software Solutions, Inc. to provide software and support to the probate judge for verifying voter eligibility and other supporting services for the November 2024 election for a three-year term beginning at the date of execution in the amount of $181,845 to be paid from Cost Center 140. Item 33, adopt the resolution assenting to vacation by Master Boat Builders, Inc. of a portion of right-of-way at Bay Shore Street as shown on the map prepared by Poly Surveying dated January 25th, 2023. Item 34, resolution assenting to vacation by Master Boat Builders, Inc., Johnson Sea Products, Inc., and Shawn and Michelle Johnson Properties LLC of a portion of right-of-way at Bay Shore Street East-West as shown on the map prepared by Poly Surveying dated January 25th, 2023. Item 35, adopt a resolution assenting to vacation by S. Feller and Dirk Johnson of a portion of right-of-way at Deacon Lane as shown on the map prepared by Poly Surveying. Item 36.
Give me just one second. Matthew, what are all these? I might know where we're at, but what are, what are they?
None in particular, we're all three.
Oh, just all combined. It seems like they're all right there together. Except for the Deacon, I guess.
First two are a north, south, and east-west unopened right-of-way again on a very old plaque that are adjacent to the existing Master Boat Builders facility. And they want the use of those, and so we have no objection to the vacation of those. The last is actually a portion of currently county-maintained unpaid roads that leads out to particular property on its own. So they, they've got to get across there now, so it'll be to our benefit.
Oh, okay.
It'll likely reduce the number of county-maintained unpaid.
You and I went and looked at that. Okay. The, the others, I guess, at Master Boats, because I know that me and Neil have been down there, and there's some drainage issues in that, in, in that area. Those are unmaintained, basic right-of-ways, I guess, is what we're talking about.
The facilities in the, in the, on the, on the, like, they're, they're.
Okay.
We have quite a bit of that throughout the county, don't we?
Thank you.
Item 36, consider taking the following action on bids. Item 37, approve the purchase of licenses from Samsara, Inc. under the Cooperative Purchasing Sourcewell Contract in the amount of $74,563.80 for a 15-month license agreement for 187 forward-facing dash cameras for the Public Works Department to be paid from Cost Center CC081 Fund 111. Item 38, approve appropriation contract with Rosa A. Lot Historic Preservation Society, Inc. in the amount of $5,000 from District One Education Funds for its annual green and white gala fundraiser. Item 39, authorize subrecipient agreement with Legal Services Alabama for the term of August 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2025 in the amount of up to $64,000 of community development block grant funds to provide civil legal assistance through a homeless prevention project. Item 40, authorize subrecipient agreement with the Child Advocacy Center, Inc. for the term of August 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2025 in the amount of up to $25,000 of community development block grant funds to provide services to child victims of sexual and/or severe physical abuse. Item 41, authorize subrecipient agreement with, on, let's see, Ozinum Charitable Pharmacy for the term of August 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2025 in the amount of up to $35,000 of community development block grant funds to provide payment assistance for prescription medications. Item 42, authorize subrecipient agreement with Penelope House for a term of August 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2025 in the amount of up to $15,000 of community development block grant funds to provide services and programs for victims of intimate partner violence. Item 43, authorize subrecipient agreement with the South Alabama Regional Planning Commission for the term of August 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2025 in the amount of up to $10,200 of community development block grant funds to provide home-delivered meals from the Grand Bay Cell Senior Center. Item 44, authorize subrecipient agreement with the City of Sims for the term of August 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2025 in the amount of up to $50,000 of community development block grant funds to provide staff costs for the Sims Senior Center. Item 45, authorize subrecipient agreement with Family Counseling Center of Mobile, Inc. for the term of August 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2025 in the amount of up to $5,000 of community development block grant funds to provide services for sexual assault victims and their families through its Rape Crisis Center. Item 46, authorize subrecipient agreement with Family Counseling Center of Mobile, Inc. for the term of August 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2025 in the amount of up to $6,700 of community development block grant funds to provide homebuyer counseling through its program known as Consumer Credit Counseling Services of Mobile requested by the Grants Department. Item 47, authorize subrecipient agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of South Alabama for the term of April 1st, 2025 through September 30th, through September, what is that supposed to be? Through September 22, 25? Okay. In the amount of up to $30,000 of community development block grant funds to provide comprehensive six-week youth enrichment summer programs.
Does September have a date certain? Is that the end of the month?
Is it September 30th?
Okay, that just needs to be included.
Okay. That's 47. Okay. Item 48, authorize subrecipient agreement with Family Promise of Coastal Alabama for the term of August 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2025 in the amount of up to $3,000 of community development block grant funds to provide services for homeless persons.
Okay, that's September 30th, or number 45.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item 49, approve professional services agreement with Hilltop Securities, Inc. in the amount of $7,750 to be paid from Fund 001, General Support Services, accounting auditing fees for the calculation of bond rebate reports.
We have a correction on that one. Okay.
Item 50, approve agreement with law enforcement agencies for grant funds for traffic enforcement only covered under the Community Traffic Safety Program for the term October 1, 2024 through September 15, 2025 for the state-designated counties of Baldwin, Bibb, Chilton, Choctaw, Koneka, Clark, Dallas, Scambia, Green, Hale-Maringo, Mobile, Monroe, Perry, Pickens, Sumter, Tuscaloosa, Washington, and Wilcox. Requested by the Southwest Alabama Regional Highway Safety Office for the programs as follows: Selective, selective traffic enforcement program in the amount of $800,000, impaired driving enforcement program in the amount of $221,088, click-it-or-ticket program in the amount of $56,316, drive-sover-or-get-pulled-over program in the amount of $64,671. And commissioners, we have an add-on. Let me pull that up. Okay. Uh, the add-on is to accept the quitclaim deed from the City of Mobile to the Mobile County Commission for certain property more specifically described in the deed to be used for the golf cart path at Cypress Creek Golf Course and no cost to the county. That's requested by Commissioner Doitt.
I'd ask it, the commission vote on that today if there's, I didn't know if you would.
I'm sorry, requested to be voted at the conference.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Thank you. I see why Eddie didn't want to be here today. That's a pretty long, that's the longest agenda we've had in the.
Uh, we do have a Inaugural Care Board meeting.
Monday. Okay, thank you. All right, Kim. At least you can let Eddie know and Ricky know that Kim was here today.
Okay, number one. Number one, approve preliminary and final plat of Heron Bay Estates, South Johnson Road. Number two, approve amending contract for Mobile County Soccer Complex Practice Fields and Parking Area between the Mobile County Commission and Duplantis Design Group due to scope changes in the project requirements. The revised project description will read, "Mobile County Soccer Complex Phase Two, Four Permanent Fields and Parking Area." And the revision to this contract was when the decision was made to go from temporary fields to permanent fields.
Correct.
Number three, approve professional services contract with Robert's Civil Engineering LLC to provide condition ratings of pavement, sidewalks, curb, and gutter and roadway striping along Mobile County roads for a total contract cost of $87,500. Number four, approve commitment letter for strengthening mobility and revolutionizing transportation program funding, also called, it's a SMART program. This is a funding application in partnership with the Alabama Department of Transportation and the City of Mobile. The funds will be used for advanced technology upgrades at several signalized intersections to improve traffic operations and reduce traffic congestion. There is no financial commitment from the county at this time. Number five is adopt resolution number one approving engineers' maps and reports containing preliminary details in connection with the construction and improvement of certain hard-surfaced roads, hard-surfaced bridges, and surface water drainage facilities and specifying certain details respecting the improvements referred to in the said engineering reports for the Mobile County Commission 2024 Transportation Pay-as-you-go Program and amount of bonds proposed to be issued therefor. Number six, adopt resolution number two to improve, to approve publication of notice notice pursuant to requirements of Alabama law for the Mobile County Commission 2024 Transportation Pay-as-you-go Program. Number seven, adopt resolution number three calling a special election by the electors of Mobile County on the question of the issuance of an $82 million principal amount of pay-as-you-go road, bridge, and drainage facilities bonds of the county and the levy of a tax for the payment thereof for the Mobile County Commission 2024 Transportation Pay-as-you-go Program. Number eight, approve non-reimbursable agreement for relocation of utility facilities on public right-of-way with South Alabama Utilities for our Monroe Lane Gray Drain Basin Pay Project. There is no cost to Mobile County. Number nine is assenting to the county engineer's approval of an extension of the approval for the following preliminary plat for one year from the previous date for Heritage Lake Phase 2B and 2C. Number 10, authorize advertising. Number ten, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Mobile County Soccer Complex Phase Two, four permanent fields and parking area. Number eleven, approve the functional reclassification of the following road as listed below. Number twelve, approve application to the Alabama Department of Transportation for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, local road safety initiative funding. Um, and that, we're going to request that on Grand Bay Wilmer, a section of Grand Bay Wilmer Road. Number thirteen, adopt resolution and approve agreement authorizing Alabama Power Company to provide power for a new traffic signal and streetlights at a new signalized intersection at the intersection of Snow Road North and Blackwell Nursery Road South. And we also are going to have one add-on, and I will get you the documentation that you need for that later today. That is approve the Mobile County, two thousand twenty-four County Rebuild Alabama Contractor Report in accordance with Rebuild Alabama Act, and that will just be a summary of the contractor expenditures over the last twelve-month period. And I think that's it for now.
I, I'd just like to say how much I appreciate all the work you've done, uh, you and your team to get, uh, everything ready for pay-go, and, and we're moving forward on that. I know it's a relief in a lot of ways.
Yes, it is, thank you.
And it, but thank you.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to say the same thing. I know you, when you go through an agenda item or two, it, it's pretty quick. Um, but a lot of people don't realize, and even myself, uh, in the past, didn't realize how much work really goes into the pay-as-you-go. Maybe even the last time I did it, I didn't realize how much work went into it, but this time I've really, uh, realized that there's a lot of work that goes into it, and thank you and, and, and your people that work with you to, to get it done. It's a lot of work, and we really do appreciate it, uh, what you, you guys do on the pay-as-you-go.
Well, thank you.
The top.
Thank you, and, and it was different this time with Brian leaving a few months ago, and I have had a lot of help from a lot of people, and I hate to even begin to name names, but in the last few months particularly, um, Rhonda Gullidge and Brad Whitman and Johnny Harper have stepped up, and it really has been a team effort, and I appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, and thank all of them, all dedicated, uh, county folks that we depend on. Do you have any comments?
No.
Announcements, comments? I just want to mention that, uh, tomorrow morning, uh, begins the Ninety-First Annual Alabama Deep Sea Fishing Radio. For those of you who don't know, that's the largest, uh, uh, deep sea fishing radio in the world according to Guinness Book of World Records. It'll attract over four thi- uh, four thousand anglers and over seventy-five thousand spectators for the next three days. And so I just wanted to make everybody aware. Uh, it begins at five A M. tomorrow morning and it ends at five P M. on Sunday. If you get an opportunity to go down to South Mobile County to Dolphin Island, um, it's, if you've never been, it's a, it's pretty neat, so if you get an opportunity to go down. And with that being said, if there's no further business, we'll stand adjourned until July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four for the regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission.